I'd like to call the regular council meeting to order for Bucyrus on April 1st, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Muritz.
Here.
Cherrick is absent. Hickman.
Here.
And me.
The March 18th, 2025 regular council meeting minutes are in your packet. Does anybody have any questions about them?
I'll move to approve this president.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion to approve Mr. Hickman's seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
I'm staying.
Minutes are approved. Granting permission for visitors to speak. Is there... Actually, we have first up on the agenda, we have a Mr. Keith French who has requested 10 minutes. Actually, I gotta fix this clock.
I have a list of suggestions, but it may take 15 minutes. I'm out of here. I know it's less than 15.
Mr. President, while we're waiting on that, I do have to get out of here at 9:30 today.
You can push it, sir.
Yep.
My name is Keith French. I will not give my address because you are... I don't know what condition your condition is in.
Excuse me, Mr. French. You started the clock too early.
It doesn't matter, Vicki. Robert's rules... I'm gonna school him in a little bar school knowledge tonight. Robert's rules are not bound by law. They will never, ever trump the Bill of Rights, ever. As much as he chooses to. He's walked over and pissed all over my civil rights long enough. Now, if he wants to hit that clock and stop me, I should be out of here within 15 minutes. I will add count two to a federal indictment. So go ahead and hit that clock again. I'm gonna say what I'm gonna say, and you better not say one syllable to me, wee man. Have we underst... We haven't understand... I'm just gonna let everybody know so I can catch everybody's attention. Wee man right here is wildly out of control in the community. He had no idea who he was talking to as he berated me, kicked me. You remember this? When you publicly humiliated me? You brought this into the chamber? You had no problem bringing it in and handing it to Gary Miller and me. You publicly berated. You had no idea who you were messing with. Let me give you a little bit of education of who I am, okay? First of all, I have a degree in criminal justice. I have a degree in it. After I got that degree, I went in what they call bar stool school. That means I've sat on a hundred and hundreds of bar stools throughout this country. Never closes, come and go as you please. Lot of knowledge in there if you pay attention and a wide range of topics. You had no idea that... Because you didn't stop. You just wanted to kick and kick and kick. So I'm gonna catch... This wildly out of control citizen in Bucyrus has placed the city of Bucyrus in the city of Columbus in a federal courtroom. Now wait till you hear this. Standing in front of a federal judge for elderly abuse. I am covered... I am disabled. You see this? I wear a brand. A green lime green ribbon. Hodgkin's lymphoma, stage four. Doctors standing over me and saying, "You're about 48 hours worth of death." That's a lot of trauma. 11 years ago. 11 years ago. You had no idea when you made that vow post and said, "You need to take the fork out of your mouth and drop some pounds, buddy." And you think that calling me fat is gonna bother me? Little wee man. When you kick somebody, you say you got balls. When you kick somebody that's got steel balls, you're gonna break your foot every time. You have placed this city in a federal courtroom in Colum... And I picked Columbus for one reason only. You remember when you berated Brandon too? When he was so proud that he was able to get a certificate to practice law at a federal court? And you said, "Bucyrus, there been in a federal court? You put your pompous ass up there?" And he said, "Yeah." And you're like, "Really?" Well, guess what, wee man? You just made the hits for the first federal lawsuit in 2025. And I have a high profile that only practices America Under Disability Act, ADA. Okay? Americans with disability, that's who is backing me. A high profile... And I put it in Columbus for that reason. Now, that's who Bran... You left Brandon... This will never hit a courtroom. You left Brandon, no defense. Yes. So it's a how much deal, okay? That's what you've done to this city. Because they chose to allow you to continue to be wildly out in our community. And if you don't believe me, I know there are screenshots all over in Crawford County now that was one of the most disgusting posts about the lady that just got sworn in. What were those three words, Calistra? I don't know what they were. I forgot it. There were three words that referred to her and her sister. You're wildly out of control. Something like two tons something. I don't... I can't remember. It was the most vile, disgusting post. In Crawford County now, left it up... I don't even know how long... I know it was up for hours and hours and hours. Do you realize that teenagers go on that Crawford County now just to simply get the scores for their schools? Do you realize that? And then elderly people? People at my church go on Crawford County now just to simply catch up on the weather? You have no idea what you have done. You have no... As you kicked me. I'm gonna give you a couple statements so everybody understands what this man has did. He posted, and I have a post that says, "I would not recommend pissing all over that Bill of Rights anymore." I... Wee man? I will add second count if you cut me off. I have the first in that Bill of Rights that was not originally put in in the Constitution. It did not come into the Constitution till about 15, 20 years later, when old George Washington and the boys wrote it up and ratified it and added it. Now, if you want to violate that, number one, I will add two counts to you. You are already facing a federal lawsuit for elderly abuse. Now, do you want to click that beep and I hear it again or just turn it off? I will be out of here shortly. But you're gonna understand what you did to me. You have not called me fat. You think... I've never been called fat in my whole adult life. Now, here's the post and posted it, written on a Facebook post that I have. "You are the worthless..." He used... I don't even use the words, not in my vernacular. I can't even say it. Remember, Mr. Hickman, when you stumbled over, what word you couldn't say? Excrement, I think is the word? I say the word shit. "You are the worthless piece of shit that ever walked into the City Hall building. Go back to Galleon and stay there." Who has time to come over from another city to address a city here? I'm gonna explain to you why I need to come here and talk to the... For the citizens. Because the citizens... Evidently, there's not a bar stool school in Bucyrus, okay? I need to help the citizens here. I came the first time to help them, and I'm gonna help them again tonight. They need somebody from Galleon that has bar stool knowledge, okay? I got it. Sat on a hundred of them throughout this country. So that's why I need to address this and show them how wildly out of control you are in our community. And I call our community 20 mile radius of where I pop my butt in my recliner. That... And Bucyrus falls well within that 20 mile radius, just as Coresline does, Marion does. Those are my communities. My Creator tells me, "Take care of the weak, the sick, the poor, and the elderly." I'm all for those. And my Creator says, "Go up to your community. Make sure you take care of the weak, the sick, the poor, and the elderly." You had no... No problem kicking, berating me, dragging me through the what? You're the worthless piece of shit that's ever walked in here. But that's not all. "Take the fork out of your mouth because you need to lose some pounds, buddy." Is that your go-to? Just berate people because of their weight? Uh, they... This old fat body is gonna be as fat as it is right now when they dropped me in that hole. But you had... You thought that hurt me? It hurt me. But you have no idea. You decided that you were gonna take what you saw and berate me of a disability. You never saw the hidden one that was so deep tucked in, that was laying on its pillow, covered in a blanket, very comfortable. And I know it has been well over eight years. Wee man? I got a brand, okay? I got a brand. Lime green colored ribbon. Hodgkin's lymphoma, stage four. Doctors standing over me. "You're about 48 hours from death." That's a lot of trauma. You put three images in my mind that were buried very comfortably for well... I know well over eight years. Well over eight years. And what you tripped was a hidden demon that you never knew. I know why I'm fat. You know why I'm fat? I'm gonna explain them three images, okay? Now, just imagine as we go through them. Everybody's seen the old cancer patient, skin and bones. I went the other way because the doctor said, "You cannot lose any weight through this treatment." Six months, every other week of chemotherapy, of high intense chemotherapy, 48 hours away from death. I'm gonna give you the schedule, what it was like. I got my chemo's on Friday, every other week, six months. Friday, I would see... Receive chemo. Saturday, I'd go grocery shopping. By Sunday, if I felt pretty decent, little housework. Monday, Tuesday, but definitely by Tuesday, I was riding a dragon until I got back and to get my chemotherapy the following Friday, okay? Just so you understand what I went through. And for eight years, and finally, I could... I mean, I... You wanna stop me?
Mr. French, your time is up. You've been given more time.
I will add a Freedom of Speech Act.
This is your first warning, Mr. French.
Go ahead and push me. Push me. You will be on count two of violating my freedom of rights to speak.
Mr. French, I'm gonna give you a second warning right now. If you don't cease, I'm gonna have Sergeant Arms remove you from the chamber.
Fine. I have... Just so you know, my attorney called me. He's watching this video. You will be having count two.
Sergeant Arms, can you remove this man from the chamber?
Freedom of speech to address my government has been violated. Kaufman interns call me, watch the video. Do that. Federal judge, federal courtroom, Columbus.
Okay, next up we have...
Before we move on, I would like to make it unequivocally clear that any comments made by Kurt were done in his private capacity and do not reflect the city of Bucyrus at all.
Okay, next up we have Mr. White, who has requested 10 minutes of public participation.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. April Fool's Day is canceled this year because no one made up a prank that could match the unbelievable crap that is going on in this administration and council right now. Here are some of the facts. The water fund tank, the auditor knew about this in December of 2024, even on tape, told the administration, the mayor and safety service director, half million dollars so far by the state was discovered. Sir, safety director in December 2024, on a verbal vote, gave sitting employees a $4.25 an hour per raise, per hour raise. No report to finance committee or to the public. Auditor stated on record, "The money's there." Did the mayor and safety service director tell the auditor to be quiet on this? Matter of fact, Mr. Hickman's Facebook post that the union wanted $10 per hour, but that never came up during council. Oh, was that an executive session information getting out? Wait on the gap in May, town hall meeting, or let's say the water fund meeting. Mr. Myers stated that not... Was not the intent, but you're the chairman, you could have stopped it, but you didn't want to. Water rates went up 15%. Sewer rates went up 14 as of January 1st, 2025. Thanks to the safety service director, needed money for the water fund. Now we're a million dollars in the hole. Now the city has to go out and borrow money. Basically, it's gonna cost what I believe each user between $50 and $80 more per year, which is going to go mostly for finance charges. More water and sewer rate hikes are coming every year for the next two to 10 years. Hold on with bold hands, the ride's just getting started. Then the council clerk got a raise of $4.25 an hour plus a dollar. Thank you. So this position got a $10,920 more this year, plus another $10,000 plus that the city pays insurance for. That's over $20,000 in wage and salary benefits on top of what she was making. Has anyone got such a raise like this? More unnecessary spending. Even Aaron stated pay freezes, but no, we had to give that position the raise. We still don't know what is going on with the cost of the insurance yet. The law director states that it's the union thing, and it's not open to public records laws. They are the ones that caused this issue, and now the taxpayers are paying the price. And yes, it's tax dollars paying for this. I hope to find out soon more about this. Now, the out-of-town tax credit, the ping-pong match still continues. Let's wait until November 2024 election. Ooh. Oh, if you don't vote for this, we won't take the credit. Levy fails. Nothing. Now the street levy, May 2025. Let's wait and see. If you vote for this, we will not take the credit. Bad thing to do. For over three years now, council has stated over and over again about this issue, about taking or not taking. Mr. Myers and Mr. Mead on record both stated, "I will never take the credit while on council." And that's on tape too. Now the email by Mr. Mead to a taxpayer, "We are going to take it anyway." So tonight, under council rules, under new business, I believe that you should vote on the tax credit now. Stop misinforming the public and dangling this over our heads. Whether you vote to take it all or you vote to remove it from the open projects list, stop BSing and lies to the citizens of this community on this issue. Now let's talk about the budget. $300,000 in the red. We're past the first quarter now of the year. Nothing. Sounds like the Economic Development Chairman. No list of reducing costs or saving measures. Nobody's listening to the citizens. But you have had some good ideas given to you, but no results. Basically, it's all talk, no show. Council members waste time reading emails when they should be working on the issues, and the amount of time that's wasted could be put to good use. But again, waiting to see if the levy passes. Now, can you lead others when you can't lead yourselves? Stop sitting behind your egos and start working on the problems. Pay freezes, pay cuts, reduced hours of operation at part-time employees. What about the $8,000 promise to the festival? Where does that money come from? Now let's talk about the street levy. Six years on this street levy, and you're still going after the credit. Or you're only spending 46% of this money on projects according to the expense budget worksheet. However, the street fund under personal services is stating that salaries are going up $86,000, hospitalization $27,000, and it goes on and on to a grand total of $150,000 more money. Contractual services, outside engineering, another $146,000. Outside contractors, another $120,000. Remember, I understand this is budgeted for 2025. But however, we have $25,000 in budget to trim trees and another $3,800 for cell phones. In closing, the comment made by Shay in the utility office, "My water bill went up, my property taxes went up, union dues went up, grocery prices went up. That is where my raise is going." Well, that didn't settle with me. Well, so didn't everyone else in this community. So I guess we have to pay your bills also? We didn't get a pay raise like you and the union members got. Why were individuals in the council? Okay? Don't we rent this out for space? The remarks made during the council on public records, okay? I think there needs to be a recourse of continuing education within these city halls because they're not following public records laws. And if someone wants to use my video, I have... Cannot stop them, okay? I'm not gonna cry foul. It's a public area. The street levy committee must be using the same tactics that the new council member used on the hate group, allowing fake posts, fake accounts, anonymous posts, and if you can't post behind your name, leave it alone. Even an article where Kevin and Aaron were quoted have come out in support of the street levy, according to the article. The editor forgot to state that both of them and of these individuals were on council during the past administration when these problems started. I guess Aaron didn't want to be... Come tonight to vote on the key issues to face this council. Maybe she didn't want to go on record and... On this vote. Or maybe this was a plan to keep this going. This past week, a member of the fart department, and I'm not against them, told me that I need to find something better to do. Matter of fact, I like what I do. I tell people the facts. I educate people. I help people out. I research things. And if people don't like it, that's okay. We can agree to disagree on things, and I'm great with that. Either you're part of the problem or you're a part of the solution. The gravy train needs to stop tonight because citizens can make changes on the ballot and can tell this city what to do. More to come on this soon. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Elmer Cop, 616 Prospect Street. It's not really my address, but I find some humor here. But 358 Carmel Ave, Galleon, Ohio. I want to first make a comment to a comment that's been made. I don't believe all the vulgarity and vicious name-calling by you or your followers is necessary. Well, what my followers do or say has nothing to do with me, so let me be clear. They have a First Amendment right, and they're allowed to practice it. If you haven't recognized the problem, she is now sitting behind those rails, and we know she was behind one hate group with 206 followers doing exactly what you have recently mentioned. As far as I'm concerned, that's the city's problem now. I've been made aware of numerous allegations regarding corruption, backdoor deals, and misinformation. A post from one of your council members stated that he intends to call out all those who brings concern to this government body. Well, here are some pertinent facts. Meanwhile, all the water rates have increased, property taxes have risen, and some pay raises also gone up, with town facing a deficit of nearly $8 million. Furthermore, it has come to light that contractors have been receiving free water. I would like to express my appreciation to Mr. Starner, also Mr. Ernst Berger, for his prompt response to my public records request, providing me with two instances of unbilled meter usage. I've been informed that the city would now be beginning charging contractors for water. However, I noticed that there is no record of a tanker truck refilling on March 20th. If such records exist, I believe it should have been included in the meter usage form provided to me. Additionally, I would like to inquire about the water lines discussed during the town hall meeting. Were the contractors working on these projects also given free water? If so, it is worth considering the number of projects that may have benefited from this arrangement. Now that the city has decided to start charging contractors for water, I wonder if the current administration was following the same practice. Hmm, who knows? If so, it is staggering to think about the amount of water that may have been given away for each of these projects and the potential revenue the city could have gained. I know, I see you're back there smiling. Everyone wants to discuss solutions. Perhaps we should start by addressing the root of the problem. And they did provide me with the unbilled meter usage, but March 20th, where was that truck at? There was nothing provided there. And if you look, there it is. March 20th being filled up. Where's that record? Why wasn't that given?
Why wasn't what given?
The record for the March 20th. Truck being filled up right here.
Was it the same truck that...
Redman Trucking. Driven Escapating.
Like I told you, it's driven... It's the contractor that was doing it. So I don't know when, what days they are, but it is metered. Because I saw that very video, and there's a...
It's metered?
There is a hundred meter on that hydrant because when you drove by, I saw it.
Okay, so the records I do have is 128, 2025, and 36 of 2025. This ain't March 20 of 2025. Where's the records at?
What do you have?
You... What you gave me, you should have them too.
Yeah.
March 20th. That's a totally different day.
That's the start date.
Okay.
That goes on... I don't calculate it every day.
Okay, well...
They have a meter, and I get the...
Hopefully, when all this is done, March 20th will be on that bill of water sale. Thank you.
I hope you're not leaving because I got something for you.
Go ahead and clarify that.
Which part?
The one that could be interpreted as a threat.
You gotta respond. It's not a threat. I just have a rebuttal on it.
Okay. Just want to clarify.
There's no threat.
Good. I'm assuming that the meter isn't checked every day, Mr. Ernst Berger. Is that correct?
The meter is not... I don't check the meter every day, but they have a hydrant meter, and they use it every day that they... When they fill the water tank, the water truck, they use a hydrant meter.
So even if it didn't get checked for a week, the usage is still gonna show up because of counters?
When the form that I have has a start date, has the contractor, has the job that they're working on, has the starting... The starting reading, the start reading, when they are done with the project, I get that meter back, and then I write the end reading, and I figure out the total usage, along with the date that they turned it in.
That makes perfect sense. Is there any other public participation?
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. Alan Young, 535 Forest Hill Court. I'm here as the current commander of Colonel Croft Post 181 of the American Legion, and I have a resolution that I would like to send to the city. Bucyrus City Flagpole dedication. Whereas the city of Bucyrus has a very prominent flagpole on the West Island on Washington Square, and whereas the city proudly flies the American flag every day of the year, and whereas former mayor Doug E. Wilson served the community of Bucyrus, Ohio as president of city council for 10 years and mayor of Bucyrus, Ohio for four years, and whereas Douglas E. Wilson served Ohio and his country and Ohio National Guard for 41 years of honorable service, and whereas Doug E. Wilson was active in his church and served honorably in many organizations in Bucyrus community, and whereas Douglas E. Wilson was instrumental in promoting purchase and installation of said flagpole and flying the flag of our country proudly on Washington Square. Therefore, be it whereas, Doug E. Wilson was also the leader in the community, recognition of Congressional Medal of Honor recipient Harry L. Martin, including the placement of the Fitty Memorial marker in Oakwood Cemetery and the dedication of U.S. Route 30 in Crawford County as the first Lieutenant Harry L. Martin Memorial Highway. Therefore, be it resolved, the Colonel Croft Post 181 of the American Legion strongly encourages the administration and city council, the city of Bucyrus, adopt such legislation needed for dedication and naming said flagpole on Washington Square to honor Doug... Douglas E. Wilson, and be it further resolved, that a suitable plaque be placed at said flagpole in honor of Doug E. Douglas E. Wilson's dedication and service to his community, church, state, and nation. This resolution was voted on and passed on March 24th, 2025, regular meeting of the Colonel Croft Post 181 of the American Legion. Submitted Commander Alan Young. And I would like to add also that Post 181 would like to pay for the... If it's passed, we would like to pay for the marker that goes at the flagpole at the city hall, just because Doug was so instrumental in getting that taken care of. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Do you have a copy of that resolution?
I... Some... Here's one here.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer this to Public Lands and Buildings.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made a motion to refer, seconded by Ms. Slater. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
What did we refer?
This resolution that the American Legion has for former mayor Doug This resolution that the American Legion has for former Mayor Doug Wilson.
Okay, I just wanted to
Would it be all right if we could explain what we just did to, if you don't are familiar with the processes? We just referred that to the appropriate committee. That committee will address it and then send it back to full council for a vote.
Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Good evening. I'm Katie Rayfeld. I'm from Crawford County Public Health, and I bring my subcommittee here.
Paula Brown.
Joe Graham.
We are here to talk to you about our subcommittee that has branched off from the HEAL grant. And I do not know if you're familiar with Crawford County Public Health. In the past three years, we've applied and have received the HEAL grant, Healthy Eating, Active Living. Makes sense, right, for the Health Department? So we're excited because we have a group that is pursuing community gardens. And so we have an idea and a plan we'd like to share with city council about that.
So we have a small group of interested gardeners that's been meeting monthly to discuss the planning of this project. So how it would work, a garden space would be a combination of raised and in-ground plots. It would be available to interested Crawford County residents. We have a policy and procedure draft and a release of claims form that I believe was submitted ahead of time. Individuals and community groups such as schools, Board of Developmental Disability, and civic groups may reserve a plot on a first-come, first-served basis. Interested community groups and businesses may contribute to the startup, and the educational opportunities for youth and community groups are vast to promote skill-building, improve mental health, provide opportunities to assist others in our community through food donations to local food pantries. The Crawford County Community Garden will strive to increase the well-being of residents and encourage positive interaction among our residents. We respectfully request the use of the city-owned lot on Lane and Clinton Street for this project. The plot development is projected to begin this summer and fall with your approval, with the launch of garden plots for public use in the spring of 2026. This would enhance our America 250 celebration of our nation next year. There's minimal cost to the city, less yard to mow and take care of, as the plots will be maintained by citizens with oversight from the Crawford County Public Health Subcommittee. Access to water is requested, whether that would be by a community tap-in or a water holding tank that could be filled for availability of use. We're also going to seek grants, local community grants. So we respectfully request your permission to utilize the land to begin the Crawford County Community Garden project.
I'll make that referral.
Mr. Myers has made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded, to refer, what would you call this?
Community Gardens, HEAL grant.
Community Gardens to public lands and buildings.
And if you want to learn more about it, the only fun day is going to be held at the Trillia on Saturday, and our subcommittee's going to be there having kids plant the seeds and just get our community garden ideas going, so.
Okay, all in favor of the referral, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So this will be discussed Thursday night this week.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Any other public participation?
Robert Taylor, 411 Blim Street.
Well, I was going to come here and be, try to be nothing but positive, but clearly some of the behavior from our council president started that, started this meeting off on the wrong foot with that. I frankly, as a taxpayer of the citizens, I don't care what anybody from out of town's got to say. I don't think you ought to be up here telling my elected officials and the people that are working for my government what they shouldn't, should be doing. They shouldn't be wasting their time answering your emails. They got things to actually take care of here, and most of these people are probably looking to take care of those problems, but they keep being distracted by nonsense like this guy here that was sitting here. That's all your fault, Kurt. Elmer coming up here with what he's complaining about, these accusations that keep being made. If you got actual evidence, take it up here to the prosecutor's office. Don't bring it up here to the podium. Let these guys all listen to it. I don't want to hear it. Just take it to the prosecutor's office, see what Matt Crawl has to say. You know, you guys are just creating distractions, things we don't even want to hear about. You know, these guys got real problems we're trying to take care of in this, in this community. I do have, like to commend the administration for what you did with the Facebook Live. That was a smart move, in my opinion. It would be nice now if we could get that same cooperation from our council president. Your behavior is bringing that type of behavior into, into this chambers. We don't need that either. I do, that's the first time I've ever seen the police escort someone out. Maybe they did that with Carolina at one time, too. But it's hard for me to take serious that you guys are looking to cut costs if we keep paying these guys overtime to be here. We don't need to do that. We're in a, we're in a financial situation where we probably can't afford to pay people overtime unnecessarily. Anyway, I'm not going to run you through all the problems. Clearly, you guys hear them every, every meeting. You get told all the problems you got. Some short-term solutions that I see is obviously reducing or eliminating the tax credit on a temporary basis until the city becomes more financially responsible and viable. How long that's going to take, who knows? But I personally don't see another option for you. Maybe there is one. I hope I'm wrong, that you have something else in the works that you can, you can do. I think you should haul any new wire department projects outside of the city. I mean, you got a million-dollar deficit, whether it's a mistake, whatever, I don't care how or who or why. That's just the reality, right? Reduce the minimum manpower of the safety forces where possible. However, I mean, top-down would be my preference. I think you save more money that way, and then you get to retain the talent, the young talent that you've already invested in. More cuts at city hall within the administration, if it's even possible. I know you guys have, all the departments have tried. And then I had an exchange with Mr. Me at one point about contributing, contributions to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System for a council. Now, it's my understanding that there is a contribution made on their behalf. What I don't know is if it's legally required by the state for the city to do that. I figured it might be. So that's not something you can cut. I think down, long-term solutions that can help the city, at some point down the road, obviously, it can't happen with this administration. And I, again, I don't know legally what Ohio Revise Code says, but maybe we ought to, at some point, look at making the mayor see a part-time position. Reduce pay, no benefits, just like what council does. I think for a city of 11,000 people, do we really need a full-time mayor? And this is not a knock on Mr. Krueger or any other mayor. It's just me thinking long-term. I think at some point down the road, we might want to look at privatizing the trash pickup. And that's not just for the city. I think in the next decade or so, the whole county's going to be, get a big wake-up call for what's going on at the landfill with Rumpke. I'm not going to go into major detail about that. I'm just saying, I foresee some issues, and that's coming from some people who are familiar with the situation there. They're probably throwing it up faster than they're supposed to. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for an extension, please.
Is there any objection by unanimous consent to give Mr. Taylor another five minutes? Okay, I don't hear any objections, so you got another five minutes, Mr. Taylor.
I think at some point in time, when the contracts are up, we need to reevaluate the contracts we have with the townships for EMS and fire. Conversations I've had with people is there's a lot of people think that they aren't paying enough. I don't know the numbers. I haven't had a chance to talk to anyone that actually knows a whole lot about it. But I think the feeling in the community is that the taxpayers of Besirrs have got to shorten the stick on that deal. I think annexation of some of the few businesses that are essentially considered part of the city, but legally, technically, they're not in our corporation limits, we need to look at that, regardless of the threats made of leaving or this or that. We just have to face reality here. This city is, we're in a sink-or-swim situation financially. There's no secret that we got to figure out how to entice some good paying employers to come to this city. It's my opinion that as a city, as an administration, you really only, you really only have two tools. You can offer tax breaks, and you can offer a reduced water rate. Outside of that, you as council, you as administration, you don't control culture. You don't, you don't control the labor force. You don't control the demographic. Those are things that employers look at, and I'm just going to be honest, I don't see those as promising from a large employer's perspective. And I think you can look at what some of the other employers have to do here to fill their orders. So when you, when, when eventually down the road, those talks happen, those are some things I think you should consider as the type of tax break and the water rate. And unfortunately, given this environment we're in now, reduce taxes and reduce tax rates for businesses probably isn't going to sit well with a whole lot of the population. But I still don't see another enticement tool that you have. And if I'm wrong, please, someone correct me, tell me where I'm, something I'm not seeing. But that's it. Hopefully, things can move in a more positive direction, and we can avoid what we dealt with here from the get-go, because that's the only way we're going to make any positive change here. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Mr. President?
Ms. Slater.
I'd like to make a motion to refer economic development zones to be referred to economic development and plotting.
Economic development zones?
Correct. It's like a tax abatement.
Would that be similar to like the JED and the SEDA, or are we talking about annexation?
So JED and SEDA are economic development zones that are already in. I thought that was a, just a group of individuals.
I think it's an agreement between the townships and the city.
Right. So this would be about reducing taxes in certain areas of Besirrs that would need development? So designating certain zones as economic development areas allow you to reduce the taxes in those areas.
So there's already the opportunity zones that the federal government has enacted for depressed areas, which the whole northern side of Besirrs is in. But I mean, are you, is there specifically something else?
Are you talking about abatements?
Correct. Yes. I feel like it at least needs to be discussed.
I believe that's an administration function.
Yeah. So tax abatements, council can do anything with them?
I think it's, I don't know, I think it's administrative function.
Abatements would have to go through council.
Okay.
So you just want to refer tax abatements to economic development?
Well, no. It would be designating certain areas as a lower tax, so it would have to be
You mean for the Besirrs income tax?
No, it's all for development.
Yeah. Economic development zones are zones that we designate as lower taxes, and then eventually it's an offset in which they increase once a business has been established for a certain period of time.
Isn't that like a CRA or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Something similar.
I'm unaware of the programs, but if you guys want to make it into a committee, if someone wants to make a second to her motion.
I'll make a second.
Ms. Slater has made the motion to refer tax abatements and
Economic development.
Economic development to the economic development committee. Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. It has been referred. Continuing on to public participation.
John Ernst Berger, Water Distribution Foreman for the city of Besirrs. The thing with the water contractors, I'll get to that here in just a second, but really what I want to discuss is, I've seen it on Facebook, I'm sick and tired of it, I'm, quite honestly, I'm done. And I'm sure everybody else is, too. The name-calling, the profane language on Facebook, okay, yes, freedom of speech, okay, I've heard it a billion times, you can cuss, swear all you want on Facebook, but to call a city employee a fat bitch in the dry, in the city, in the utility office, in the drive-thru is just uncalled for. That is just, to me, is uncalled for. And for those of you that are on Facebook, I'm sure you've probably seen it. Some of you may, may not have, but it did, it did happen. I saw the, I saw the screenshot of it, so it did happen. I don't know who, I know who it is. I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus tonight, because that's just not the way I do things. But the name-calling, the profane language on Facebook, calling people names, Two-Ton Sisters, calling city employees names, it's got to stop. It's okay, we heard Mr. French earlier, he, he got basically bashed because he's from Gallion and he speaks here. Mr. Kopp is from Gallion, and he speaks here. That's okay for him, but it's not okay for Mr. French. It's okay on Facebook for people out of state to comment, but it's not for Mr. French. I think it's all unfair, and I think it's, I think it's just bogus myself. I, it just, to me, it's, if you, if you side with me, then I'll let you do what you want. I'll, I'm okay with it. Talking about hate groups, if we want to talk about hate groups, and Carolyn Shireman being part of a hate group, and Clarissa being part of a hate group, if you're calling people names and using vulgarity and profane language and using, and talking bad about people and city employees, and calling them thieves and crooks, and telling them they're stealing money, that to me is a hate group. If you're hating on people, if you're calling people, using vulgarity and everything else, to me, that's a hate group. It's just your private hate group. So if you want to talk about hate groups, let's talk about hate groups. Stop the hate, stop the name-calling, stop the vulgarity, stop calling people names on Facebook, especially city employees. They don't want to hear that. I don't want to hear it. I've got more important things to do with my time than to hear people talk about people getting named, called names and bashed on Facebook. It's just, it's just, it's, it's done. It's got to stop. Throwing people under the bus for misinformation or possible mistakes. It happened to, it happened to Bonnie, it happened to our auditor. They, they got, they both were thrown under the bus for probably misinformation or a possible mistake. I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but if the shoe fits, wear it. That's all I've got to say about that. We are all here for one common goal. Am I right? We're one common goal, and that goal is to what? Make the city of Besirrs a better place to live, a better place, and to fix the economic situation that we're in. But all the name-calling, all the crap about the, the video cameras and all this stuff, it takes away from all that, and we can't, they can't do anything because they're too busy dealing with stupid cameras and calling names and, and federal court indictments and all this other stupid crap that we, that we're dealing with. Let's just, let's stop, let's, we need to turn, we need to turn down the heat a little bit and learn to get along. We need, and that's just what it boils down to. We need to get along, and we need to find a common ground, and that common ground is to fix the situation that we're here for. And if we can't do it, just stay off of Facebook, like Mr. White said, like Mr. White said earlier, you're either part of the solution or part of the problem. If you want to be part of the problem, just stay out of, just stay out of here. Don't even come in the doors. If you want to be a part of the solution, come up here and have some ideas. If you don't want to have, if you don't have any ideas, just keep your pie holes shut, because quite honestly, they don't want to hear it, I'm sure, and neither do some of you. I know I don't. I get sick and tired of it. Now, the water usage by the, by the contractors. If we started charging the contractors, and I want you to think, I want, can I have a couple more minutes?
Question to extend his time, please.
Second that.
Second.
You want to do it that way or the unanimous?
I, I made a motion to extend his time.
Okay, Mr. Myers has made a motion to extend the time. I'll put a number on it.
As long as he needs, as a city employee.
Unlimited time, seconded by.
He's better than anybody else as a city.
I was going to say, we should put a cap on it. We should put a cap on it.
My recommendation is five minutes.
I have to agree with Kurt on that.
Okay, so Mr. Myers was the one that made the original motion.
Second.
Wait, what?
Mauritz seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, you've got five more minutes, Mr. Ernsberger.
The water, the water usage by contractors, if we would, and I want everybody to think about this level-headedly and think seriously about it. If I were, if I were to charge the contractors, say, I'm going to charge you for the water that you use, okay? What are they going to tell, what are they going to do with their bid? They're going to jack that bid up, am I right?
Absolutely.
Plus 30%.
They're going to, they're going to jack it up. And then what, then, then what? Work, the city is going to pay for that water that we use, that they're using. The city's paying for our own water. How stupid and ignorant is that?
30%.
Exactly. So, so why would we do something so stupid and crazy? Okay? But if that's what people want, if that's what everybody wants, then I'll go ahead, I don't have a problem billing them. If you want to see contractors go, start jacking up their bids, hey, more power to them.
These are contractors doing city work, correct?
Yes. Now, if, if, if it's a contractor that is doing city, work for the city.
For our city.
Yes. If it's a contractor doing private work, such as for the gas company, they do get charged. So they, so they will jack, they will jack the bid up and I guarantee they will. There's no, there's no question. So what I do, and I, I'm very, I'm very anal and you could probably ask Kaylee and, and Mr. Truca and, or the mayor and the service director, I'm very anal about my water usage. I'm very anal about it. Yeah, Eric said, what do I do, Eric? Every year, I ask for how much, an estimate of how much water you guys used for that year fighting fires. Do I not?
Yes, you do. We have a machine hanging up trying to track.
So I am very anal when it comes to trying to track the water that the city uses. But you know how difficult it is? It's very difficult when I've got water main breaks, when I've got people stealing water, when I've got people that, that are doing, who knows what, that I can't catch everybody. So it's, it's not an easy job, what I do. And then I've got a crew out, we've got a crew out doing work, so I'm out helping them as well. And then I've got people asking for public records requests. So I've, now, now I've got this to, now I've got that to take care of. And then I've got the EPA to deal with, and I've got this to deal with, and this to deal with. And still, on top of it, I try my hardest to track water so I can, so I can make this city a little bit better. And alls I get is, well, well, we give contractors free water and I paid all this money for boil advisories and all this and that. You know, I can, I'm, I'm trying my best to plan, to plan water main breaks, okay? I'm trying, I'm trying to plan those accordingly, but, but I'm finding it hard time to do that. So if anybody has any ideas on how to plan a water break or a service line break, please let me know because I'd love to hear your ideas, okay?
January 10th, where is your busy month?
So, you know, I can't plan those things. So when it comes to boil advisories, if, if it doesn't affect, if it's not in your affected area, please don't, please don't post on Facebook about how much money you paid for water and there's another boil advisory. If it doesn't affect you, stay off Facebook. Just, just stop the madness, okay? It's stupid. I'm trying, you know, so I try, we try our hardest to not affect, not to put a boil advisory into effect, but sometimes it's, it's rather difficult. Sometimes we can't get away with it. And that's just the bottom line. EPA has laxed up on their, on their, the way we do it and allowed us some leeway, but it's, it's still, it's still something that we have to do to protect the citizens of the city. And I'm not, I'm not willing to put my license on a line and my job on a line to allow somebody to get sick or to possibly put somebody in a hospital because they got sick because I didn't issue a boil advisory. And that's just the way I do things. And if nobody likes the way I do things or you have better ideas, please come talk to me. My email's on the city Facebook page. My business card with my phone number and email are all, both in the mayor's office. Pick it up, call me, email me. I'll sit down and I'll sit down for hours and talk to you about different ideas.
He will.
That's all I have. Thank you.
He will.
Any other public participation?
I actually just have a question. We saw 1323 North Sandusky. I've been in my house 20 years. I've never had to boil more water, so thank you. I did, I wanted to know if all the races went through or if just Miranda's race had went through and if that, the ASME races, once they went through, are we done with all the races?
So there is an ordinance, or there is a manpower ordinance on the agenda tonight for non-union employees and that's the only.
I'd like an explanation of who those employees are and, not, not individuals. I don't mean that. I just mean, are they, is it like the city service director, the mayor, is that the manpower we're discussing?
There's the service director, the mayor's secretary.
Nobody who's elected. Nobody who's elected, so not the law director, not the mayor.
Actually, I have a list.
Perfect. That's, that's really all I wanted to know.
The deputy auditor from my office, the auditor's clerk from my office, the legal assistant from Brandon's office. Brandon is included. He's elected because he's part-time prosecutor. So he would be in that manpower ordinance. Other two part-time civil service, there's one civil service clerk of, and three part-time civil service commissions, and then the service director, and then the administrative assistant, and then Bonnie from Access.
Is this clerk split because it's also Brandon's clerk?
No.
Because she's part prosecutor?
No, she's fully, she's just legal assistant.
Fully for him?
Yes.
All right. That's all I needed.
Any other public participation? Seeing none. We are moving on to standing committee reports. Actually, I'm sorry, we have communications and petitions. The first one is from ADA MH.
She had already spoken. Hold up participation.
Oh, that was her?
Yeah.
Then we have one from the county auditor, Robin Cheech, the Tax Incentive Review Council, dated March 20th, 2025.
This is dated March 20th, 2025 to Council Clerk, Bucyrus City Council. Dear Clerk, the Crawford County Tax Incentive Review Council recently meant to review the tax abatement agreements for your jurisdiction. This review was done in conjunction with the annual report filed March 31st, 2025 by the Enterprise Zone Manager and is for the period ending December 31st, 2024. Enclosed, you will find the recommendations made by the Tax Incentive Review Council as required by the Ohio Vice Code, Section 5709.85. A legislative authority that receives from a Tax Incentive Review Council, written recommendations shall, within 60 days after receipt, hold a meeting to vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the recommendations. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Enterprise Zone Manager for your jurisdiction or me. Sincerely, Robin Cheech, Chairman of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mr. Hickman, did you abstain from this?
No, I was not there. I had just come home from work and I was tired and sweaty and I didn't want anyone to deal with that. So no, I was not there.
Okay, so this TIRC, this sounds like just the same thing that Ms. Slater was kind of wanting to go into committee here, tax incentives for businesses and things, so.
The TIRC reviews agreements that have been made, if it were us or any other political entity, can they just review them for accuracy and legality?
Mr. President?
Mr. Murray?
I belong to it as a mayor. There's a mayor from Galian, different officials with different municipalities. We all belong to TIRC, Pioneer Superintendent belongs, all the area schools superintendents belong. And what we do is we look at businesses that state that they are going to create jobs and they make a recommendation, how many additional jobs they think that they can actually increase. And then as, as a committee, we go ahead and get together and review the commitments were abated by the companies in the area. And we vote collectively on the different businesses, not only in Bucyrus, but Galian, Crestline, New Washington, and, and just to review that, to make sure that they're meeting their goals that they set forth. And our local, our local one that has been reviewed is Burger King, and that's the most recent one that's on the books right now, so.
And also Bucyrus Storage.
And Bucyrus Storage, we just, yeah, that was the other one we just reviewed.
So this gives them a property tax, something with their property taxes?
Correct.
But it doesn't affect income taxes?
No.
Okay. Any motion to accept and file this letter?
Second.
Wait, do, do, did the AD, did they give us a letter, the AD?
No, they, they came to present, but they did it under public participation.
Did you have something, Vicki?
We have to refer the Tax Incentive Review Council's recommendations to the Economic Development Committee, and then the committee either approves or disapproves, and if they approve the recommendations, they request legislation stating as such. And then a copy of that legislation is then given to.
So we want to change it to refer instead of accept and file a letter, just refer this to economic development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I need a motion for that.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion and Mr. Hickman seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That is referred to economic development. Now, we're moving on to standing committee reports with platting committee first, Mr. Me.
No reports this time.
Any questions for platting committee? Seeing none. Public Lands and Buildings is not here, so Mr. Hickman, you can give that one.
They do not have a report this time.
Any questions for Public Lands and Buildings? Moving on, Health and Safety Chairwoman, Mrs. DeShawn.
Draft legislation has been received for food trucks and peddlers in solicitor's law. I have emailed to the law director and the committee members my suggested revisions to both drafts. We are awaiting draft legislation for the taxi cab insurance requirements. We will be having speakers talking to the committee at our April 3 committee meeting on Chapter 505, Animals and Fowl, and they will be presenting their suggested revisions for the committee's consideration. End of my report.
Any questions for Health and Safety? Seeing none. Finance Committee, Mr. Myers.
I do not have a report.
Any questions for Finance Committee? Seeing none. Economic Development, Mr. Hickman.
I did reach out to Greg Timberlake this week. He expresses a lot of interest in the JED and SITA. Said that he's going to give the lawyer that is supposed to present a call tomorrow and he will update me as it goes. That is the end of my report.
Is that the new person that took over the chamber or not the chamber?
No, the partnership, yes.
Partnership, okay. Any questions for Economic Development? Seeing none. Service Committee, Mr. Mauritz.
900, Chapter 900 is out there, excuse me, Title 900s are out there for people to see. Anybody wants to look at them, comment on them, offer suggestions, anybody's more than welcome to look at those, how about, plus committee members are already looking at already. And hopefully we'll give.
Is this the final, final, final revision?
It should be. We've already made some little tweaks to it, just verbal, basically verbal stuff, not, not penalties and fines and all that stuff. It's just all a little bit of verbiage.
Is there any questions for Service Committee? Seeing none. Special Ad Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure, Mrs. DeShawn.
We are waiting on draft legislation for rules of procedure in codified ordinance chapters 111 and 113. End of my report.
Any questions for Special Ad Hoc? Special Ad Hoc for Property Maintenance, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for the Special Ad Hoc? Seeing none. Special Ad Hoc for Zoning Map, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for Special Ad Hoc? Seeing none. Traffic Commission, Mayor Truca.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. The City of Bucyrus Traffic Commission would like to recommend one amendment to the traffic control map for South Sandusky Avenue. There shall henceforth be two driving lanes on South Sandusky Avenue from Marion Road to Beale Avenue, with the north-southbound left-turn lanes at Southern Avenue and a southbound left-turn lane at Beale Avenue. And we provided a map on the second page that shows how the roadway would be reconfigured. Additionally, the Traffic Commission is requesting a review of Ordinance 46-96 to be referred to City Council for a consideration of being repealed. Per Jeff Dunn, the city garage foreman, the ordinance has not been enforced since the Doug Wilson administration. Mr. Dunn said that many of the street signs are faded and are in need of being replaced. This is a cost that the city does not want to incur if the ordinance is not going to be enforced. Per Captain Wirt, there is still the $48 hour parking limitation within the city limits allowing for enforcement during snow events. End of my report.
Is the traffic changed under a 30-day trial?
No. No, right, no. What we're asking for going forward is, was when we go ahead and look into, we will be doing a sewer line replacement in 2026, but in the meantime, it's a recommendation. Right now, there's a center turn lane from Marion Road all the way to Beale. There's a center turn lane and what it does is it forces the traffic to the outside edges of the, of the roadway. And the engineering company is stating that it's really putting pressure on the outside edges of the road. And they said that it would be our, our benefit to maintain the road for longer purposes, longer time duration periods, is just to have a, a center line down the road. And that way, if you, if you're turning into a residential, the person behind you is just going to have to wait, you know, that extra 30 seconds or a minute or however long. But right now, some of the places that the roadway is on, on South Sandusky Street, it's all the people can do to get by the center car lane and without clipping the mailboxes on, on either side of the road. So that recommendation is being done to the Engineering Department.
Is Ordinance 46-96 the two-hour parking?
Yeah, what that, what that is, is that's the one, you have two inches of snow or greater. The, the big problem is, is that people continue to still park there. Police Department, what they have to do, even though the signs are there, you don't really necessarily want to toast. you don't really necessarily want to toast somebody away. Uh, well, I guess it was never enforced. Um, the biggest thing is, is that when there is a, a problem, the Police Department does go out to the different residents. And if there is a problem, that they usually will hang a card on the, on the door, their, um, you know, the front door of their home or apartment and give you a day or so to move your car so they can actually snowplow the street.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer both these to Health and Safety, please.
Doesn't the traffic control map, some of that, doesn't that go to Plating or?
Nope.
It's all Health and Safety?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Myers made a motion to refer both these to Health and Safety. Ms. Slater seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Any questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none. Need a motion to accept committee reports collectively?
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Report of City Officers, Mayor Truppa.
Uh, I have no report for a mayor report.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none. Safety Service Directors, Report, Mr. Starr.
I have no report.
Any questions for a Safety Service Director? Seeing none, Law Directors, Report, Mr. Goebert.
Mr. President, I want backup. Um, Tommy, he can tell you about what's going on at our wastewater treatment plant as far as, uh, opening the.
Compost pile opened today. The hours are from two to, or from eight to two every day. We will be open up, so feel free.
No commercial waste, right?
And no commercial waste.
Does that include weekends or just weekdays?
That is going to include weekends also. It's seven days a week.
Okay, still moving on to Law Directors, Report, Mr. Goebert.
I was predisposed on other city business this weekend, so I don't have a report.
Any questions for a Law Director? Seeing none, Auditors, Report, Ms. Lewis.
I have a brief update on the general obligation bond. I spoke with Squire, Patton, and Boggs, the city's bond counsel, on Friday, March 28, 2025. As of now, there is a tentative closing date scheduled for April 16, 2025. An amortization schedule is being created with Huntington Bank midweek of April 7. It is requested that the auditor, mayor, law director, and clerk of counsel be available for the signing of the documents. And then I did want to, I guess, dispel some errors that might have went out to council. I gave you guys a little packet. Below, there is a transcription of an email that council received today. It states, "Dear council members, the last three years, the street fund, street income tax money, hasn't even made it to 50%, which is an incorrect percentage, of that levy money going towards the actual street improvement line item 210-7610-52510. Here are the numbers right here from the expense budget worksheet for the last three years. This fund is being totally and efficiently run. I think the voters would be outraged to know this is, in their minds, 100% of that money is going to asphalt resurfacing. Sincerely, Kurt Fankhauser, Bucyrus City Council President." First, I would like to point out exactly what Mr. Fankhauser has stated, that this is an expense budget worksheet. He incorrectly believes that the revenue from the street levy is listed in this report. It is not. What he actually pulled was department total expenses, making all of his percentages largely incorrect, because that is not the amount of the street income tax dollars brought in. There are other revenue streams in the street fund, but the tax levy is the primary funding source. Second, the street improvement account number, which he incorrectly calls a line item, when the correct term is an expense account, a line item is in the budget, the ordinance. An expense account is what you read in the accounting software. So when it goes into the last five numbers, it's an account. Um, second, the street improvement account number is one expense account that is primarily, used primarily for one large contract for multiple smaller street improvements that typically goes to Bucyrus Road materials. But it is not the only street project done in the year. All expense accounts under the capital outlay item line are street projects. Third, you would need materials such as asphalt, rock, concrete, stone, to complete all these projects, which would be listed under all materials and supplies expense accounts. Please note, in the numbers below, I did not include expenses for engineering, which would also be needed for these projects. But as it is one expense account out of the entire contractual services line item, I did not want to add too much to make it too convoluted. But the attached sheet from Dylan Wyatt from McKeever and Associates, this city engineer breaks down, um, and it does include engineering, but not the material and supply costs. The email stated 2023 actual, 47% went to the street improvement line item. Wrong. Actual revenue for the street tax levy was $1,711,816.87. And if you go to the copy of the 2023 detailed trial balance I provided you all, you can see the fir, on the first page, the highlighted revenue line, the description is .5 income tax street levy. And you will see that $1,711,816.87, the actual expenses for the street tax levy. And here, if you would turn to page three, and then you would have to add together those two highlighted items, because they would be the material and supplies total. Under year-to-date amount is the cash spent. Uh, the outstanding encumbrance is the amount on a purchase order that's pledged toward those vendors or lines that have not yet been paid in 2023 in this, but would be. So you still have to count that. And then on the next page, you will see the capital outlay totals, highlighted, the year-to-date amount, and then you have to add the outstanding encumbrance. And all those four highlighted areas added together are $1,647,039.30, which means that the actual amount of tax dollars spent on, in just, um, material and supplies and capital outlay is 96.215. And if you would add in the engineering, you would be well over 100% of taxpayer funds going specifically just to that. We're not talking personal services. We're not talking phone bills. We're not talking gas. We're not talking, we're talking just the materials and supplies, just the actual projects themselves. And if you wanted to add an engineering to get you over that 100%, you could do that. 2024, actual, 40% money went to the street improvement line item. Wrong. The actual revenue for the street levy that year, and you can follow along in the other packet I gave you that's highlighted, um, $1,811,575.22. The actual expenses for the street levy, and once again, this is just a capital outlay and materials and supplies, was $1,825,264.92, which would put that at 100.756% went of capital fund, or out of a street tax levy dollars went there. I did not print off the 2025 for you guys to follow along, because it would be in the detailed trial balance we just sent out today. So you can check that if you want. Um, the budgeted revenue for this street tax levy is 1.75 million. The budgeted expenses are currently at $1,739,046.74, which would be 99.374. And once again, that does not include engineering for those projects. So I would like to implore Mr. Fankhauser, if he doesn't know what he's looking at, or what the meaning of any of these reports are, that he can feel free to stop up into my office for any kind of clarification. It would be better than arbitrarily grabbing random numbers without context. And please feel free to see me if you have any fundamental misunderstandings about projects, funds, or how departments operate.
Are you at the end of your report?
Yeah.
Um, I got some questions about this. Whose cell phones are being paid for out of the street fund?
I would assume probably a portion of John Ernst's burgers, probably a portion of the service directors. If you were a, yes, if you were somebody who was split. Or it might not be cell phones particularly, it could be the phone, the telephone out there. If you have a telephone listed at the garage, at the street garage, that would pay for that. That would also cover internet.
Internet should be free out there.
Well, we budget for it, just in case.
Um, next question.
Thank you.
Next question, on the Personnel Services, um.
Which year?
For the 210. 210. In 2023, it was $483,000. 2024, it went up to $562,000. And in 2025, you budgeted $712,000. So what's driving up Personnel Services in the street fund?
Raises would, the increased.
So the $4.25 raises drove that up?
Well, that would possibly be part of it. It could also be part of the health insurance that went up as well. Yes.
So it's 200, over 200,000 more just in two years due to raises in health insurance?
What's the man hour right now? There's more man hours on that project the following year.
And we were also told by our healthcare person that we should probably be budgeting for rollover, just in case, 500,000 extra throughout the city. Doesn't mean we're going to use all that money. And you can follow that under the year-to-date amount and the month-to-date amount and track that in your detailed trial balance.
So I'm welcome to stop up at your office and go over some ones?
Anytime, you will feel free. There's candy.
Do I have to make an appointment?
No.
There's a lot of people over there.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for the auditor?
Yes, I have a question. Actually, I'm probably.
For the auditor?
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Slater, go ahead.
Um, how long did it take you to make this today?
Um, these, it took me.
This that you gave us? The, the, what you just read off of the.
What I just read off?
Yeah.
Probably two, two and a half hours.
Okay. And, and just, because I don't know if this got distributed out to the public. So we received an email from Kurt giving partial information. Um, so it took two hours out of something you could have, two man hours of something we probably could have, could have been a conversation, if you understand? Okay. So, um, and the other thing is, do you receive gap training, like training on the principal accounting?
I received four hours when I first started and I have a, for training. That was it. Because we contract out, and they have, they're mandated to give us so many hours initially, but that is all.
Okay. So you did it like all, on the job training, obviously?
Yes.
Right. So is it like completely different, correct, than like, say, a regular business?
Yes. Um, any kind of governmental fund accounting is totally different than any kind of business. Actually, each fund should operate as its own separate tiny business.
Okay. Could, like, basically, like, John can be paid from five or six different accounts, right? And depending on?
I believe he's paid fully from the water fund, because he does that specifically there. But say, like, my clerks, because they pay bills for all of them, they do work for all of them, they're split out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for your auditor?
I don't have a question. I do want to echo Ms. Slater's, um, point. Uh, I went up to talk to the auditor today about this, and it took a half an hour conversation, and she took two to two and a half hours to write it up and print it out for us. All you have to do is come up and ask. That's all it took for me.
I was in the auditor's once and was asked to leave in the auditor's office in December, try and talk about stuff, so.
Can I tell you guys why this happened? Because when I asked him to leave, he was on the phone with me pressuring, I was on the phone with Joy Schiefer, the previous auditor, and he had me call her purposely, put her on speakerphone, and then was talking about the out-of-town tax credit, and how we need to report about how awful the general fund and the safety forces fund was. And I said, if he wanted to be the auditor, then he should run. And then I asked him to leave my office.
No, that's not what it was about. It was about the $4.25 raises.
This is not the venue for this.
It was about the $4.25 raises.
Point of order!
As always, said.
We must continue with.
I believe we have point of order.
Who called the point of order?
We both did at the same time, but I'll take.
Okay, Mr. Hickman, go over your point of order. What's your point of order?
We need to move on. This is not the time nor the place to argue.
Order of the day.
I call for the orders of the day.
I'm going to rule on Mr. Hickman's thing first. Okay. I'm overruling, Mr. Hickman. Now I'm going to go over your calling for the orders of the day. And we're going to continue with the agenda.
Thank you.
So, does anybody have any questions for the auditor? Yeah, I got a question. Do we record, how many hours do we spend on the records requests?
Not the hours, no. But I believe Miranda has a nice log, if you ever want to take a look.
Well, I, I've thought about that too, Mr. Me. And I was told at one point that she, referring to Ms. Slater, has made more public record requests than anybody else in this town.
This is disparaging. Point of order.
Exactly. There was no call for that, but. Mr. Frizzell, you need to refrain from talking from the gallery. Just, there's a lot of records requests. And it ties us up for a long, long time. I fully agree, Mr. Me. I fully agree with you on that. All right, can we move on to order? Any last questions for the auditor?
I have no questions, but I do want to thank you, um, Ms. Mrs. Lewis, for your report and for clarifying, um, the misinformation that was recorded out by Mr. Fankhauser.
Okay, we're moving on to Treasurer's report. And there is no Treasurer's report. And Treasurer's not here, so we can't ask the Treasurer for any questions. So, same thing applies to the police chief, they're not here, fire chief. So I need a motion to accept city officers' reports.
I believe you'd accept them.
Second.
Mr. Moritz made the motion. I believe Mr. Hickman seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Visitors input regarding reports of standing and special committees and city officers. Don't see any visitors' input. Consideration of proposed legislation for first time.
Proposed Ordinance 16-2025, it's the repeal of Ordinance 12-2023, which set the minimum staffing for the fire department. Uh, amending and supplementing Sections 135.02 and 1 point, and 135.03 entitled Control by Service Safety Director and Powers of Fire Chief Respectfully under Chapter 135 entitled Fire Department under Title V entitled Administrative, under Part 1 entitled Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bucyrus and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 17-2025, that's amending Ordinance Number 37-2023, changing transfer to advance. Uh, amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 37-2023 intending to be retroactive, intending to retroactively clarify that the transfer therein was to be in advance of funds and declaring an emergency. Proposed Resolution 213-2025, it's the ODOT Sandusky Ave. street paving. The following resolution enacted by the City of Bucyrus of Crawford County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the city in the matter of the state described project, and declaring an emergency. Proposed Resolution Number 214-2025, uh, it's the sale of the North End Fire Station. A resolution authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bucyrus to advertise for bids for the sale of the, of 606 North Sandusky Avenue, Bucyrus, Ohio, permanent parcel number 08-0050047.00 and 08-0050048.000. All said parcels being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future, needed for any municipal purposes. Further. needed for any municipal purposes. Further authorizing and directing the service safety director to set the minimum bid for all fermented property to be no less than $225,000 and no cents and to enter to a purchase agreement with the highest and best bidder and to deliver a quick claim deed therefore, while reserving the right to reject any and all bids and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion to accept as a first reading?
Mr. President, may I ask, before you ask about accepting the first reading, may I ask a question of the law director?
Yeah.
On ordinance number 16 dash 2025, which deals with ordinance, the repealing of ordinance number 12 dash 2023, the minimum staffing for the fire
Correct.
department. When the committee met, our motion was to repeal ordinance 12 dash 2023. And that was, you know, when I sent to you my suggested revisions on this particular piece, I had that in there. But it's not in here. And my suggested revision was not taken under advisement. So my concern is when the time comes, then I have to, as the Health and Safety Chair, give my report on pending legislation, whether it's favorable or unfavorable. I mean, this piece talks about amending and supplementing sections 135.02 and 135.03. It doesn't talk about repealing ordinance number 12 dash 2023. So I'm not sure how, how I can respond to, I mean, my gut would be to say we're not favorable because that's not what we asked for.
It's my understanding that you asked to have the six man minimum taken out of the ordinance. And that's what I did.
Okay, I made a copy of the transcript and it says, uh, motion to repeal ordinance 1223 as an emergency. And that would allow the service safety director to, um, have that back under his control and given the financial situation that we're in. Um, and then I asked, uh, Mr. Myers to elaborate on what 12 dash 23 referred to because we all know, but the public, you know, wouldn't know what 1223 had to do with. So again, it was a motion to repeal ordinance.
So my understanding is you wanted the six man minimum taken out, correct? No, the motion was to repeal ordinance.
So that would eliminate the whole 135.02 and 135.03.
Right. I've, just, just for clarification. So if you would repeal 135.02 and 135.03, we're talking about the sections inside of our ordinances, not the actual previously established ordinance, what was it, 2023? So if you would remove those, then there would be no control by safety service director and powers of the fire chief, correct?
I believe it would just default to the service safety director.
And my suggested revision was to state hereby repealing ordinance number 12 dash 2023, which is what we asked for. And then continue on and amending and supplementing sections 135.02 and 135.03, which would be the strikeout of save and accept minimum staffing of the fire department.
Okay.
Because the bottom line is, we're wanting 135.02 to say, the service safety director shall have exclusive control and management of all employees of the fire department and may establish rules and regulations to further the efficient operation of the department, period. We're doing away with the verbiage that says, save and accept minimum staffing of the fire department shall not be reduced below six members of the collective bargaining unit.
Okay.
Yes, when I read it, yeah.
Would you like the way in here?
I mean, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I can fix that.
And then also in my suggested revisions, under section one, I mean, there were other suggested revisions, which you did pick up on. But under section one, where it talks about line 1, 2, 3, 4, it says, under title V entitled Fire Department, I changed that to read administrative because that's what title V is entitled, administrative, not fire department. So that's a change. But all the other, um, suggestions, I note.
Are you guys working together when you're coming up with this stuff?
Um, would you let me respond to that?
Go for it.
And I did this with, um, Mr. Gober, Mr. Gober, uh, Mr. Gernert. When he prepared legislation and then it would, you know, be in our committee packets, I would look the legislation over and I mean.
Like you were courting with law directors obviously midweek, between meetings?
No. When the committee or the council packet is sent to all the council members, at that time, I review the packet. And in that packet are the ordinances. I read those ordinances and if I feel that something is not correct, I submit what I call my suggested revisions. They're suggestions. I'm not saying you need to do this, but.
And you're talking in the 24 hour window before the council meeting starts is when this is agreeing?
Yeah. I mean, you know, having served for five former law directors for almost 38 plus years, and this was my job, to not only type legislation, but basically I prepared the legislation. You know, the law directors would look at what I did and say, basically what I'm doing. They would look at what I prepared and then say, oh, we need to change this. Okay, we'll change it.
So you're sending an email like by what time Monday? Like, so is it?
Well, I mean, you know, when Miranda sends the packet out, I don't know what time was it sent out on Monday for something?
24 hours, yeah.
Yeah. Now, I'm not sitting there by my computer and waiting for that packet and getting right on it. I mean, I do have.
When did the, when did?
Right. I'm just saying it's, it is a real, like, sometimes it might be just, maybe.
Are we waiting till last minute to get the legislation drafted up? I mean, I don't understand what's going on here as far as, it seems like this all hits 24 hours before the meeting and then we got all these revisions and corrections that you want done.
Well, that's the first time we see them.
Yeah, that's the first time I see.
But were, were you working with the previous law director midweek before that 24 hour window?
No, not at all.
I have a suggestion.
And here's, and, and I have expressed this.
I have a suggestion.
Can I finish what I have to say, Clarissa?
Please.
I don't have to look at the legislation and I don't have to offer suggestive revisions. Like when I see that, you know, a title V has been called Fire Department, when hey, if you go to the book, title V is called administrative. I could gladly sit back, if that bugs you, and not check this. But I will tell you this. I will still do what I'm doing, which is checking the legislation. And if I see errors, if you will, I will vote no against that piece of legislation because I will not vote yes on legislation if, in my opinion, which I'm not always right, but if it's not prepared correctly.
Vicki, I don't have any problem with you looking at the legislation beforehand and offering suggestions. I'm just trying to see if we can get it to where it's happening way before the 24 hour window so that you guys can make.
What we used to do years ago, what I'd like to see us get back to, is the minute that the law director's office has it done, forward it to those committee members for review, not wait until we get it in the packet.
Well, Vicki, weren't you, didn't you used to be requesting draft legislation from the law director's office as far back as when Rob Ratliff was the law director? Like, very, you know, early on rather than.
Well, I worked for Rob Ratliff.
No, no, but when you weren't working for Rob Ratliff, you, you were making public record requests all the time for draft legislation, draft legislation, draft legislation. And I thought that was happening way before the 24 hour window before the council meetings. And then you were looking at the stuff and working with Rob and any changes?
No.
If I can just make a suggestion. Um, are we not using Google Administrator as our email, correct? Is there a way that those suggestions could be on the drive so we could look at them beforehand?
And that would constitute having a meeting outside of a meeting then?
Is the emails documented?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, did, like, just to get clarification, have, did you have that expectation communication with Brandon when he assumed the role? That you're running and done that, that by Tuesday?
Okay, you want to say that again, please?
Yeah. So you and Brian had clearly like a meeting of the minds that you would send revisions Monday that you expected to see in the packet by Tuesday?
Well, I think the meeting of the minds was probably my first email that I sent and said.
Yeah, probably.
You know, in my review of this ordinance, here are my suggested revisions.
Was the email sent yesterday afternoon or yesterday evening?
Well, what I mean is that, like, did you set the expectation it was supposed to be in the packet the very next? Like, like you and Brian did this exchange.
Well, no, I didn't. I mean, I was going to ask him to, uh, speed up his work process of the legislation. I mean, as soon as he was able and gave it to, you know, Miranda and it was in the packet. Or are you saying that you would like him to give it?
Is this going to be, is this going to be Thursday?
I was just wondering, like, when he's, he got it done, draft wise, if, and then he sent it to Miranda, if like he could just carbon copy you at that time, so you get it sooner than the packet goes out.
But you probably don't get it until Monday, correct?
Most times.
Which, which again, I mean, and I am not faulting the law director at all on that. I mean, I don't even, I don't imagine what's on his plate.
So these revisions are, they will, they will be, and I'm so sorry if I'm asking questions that maybe it's because I'm new, I'm just trying to understand. These suggestions or revisions could be done at the committee then?
No.
No, because we don't have the legislation yet by then. We requested.
No, I mean, right. But I mean, like, so you've requested the legislation and this one's getting passed as emergency? Or is it going back to committee?
When, when we request legislation at committee, then the law director prepares that and then submits it to the council clerk for the next council meeting.
Right. Understood. But it takes three readings, correct? So can it be?
If it's non-emergency.
Right. So could this be discussed at the next committee meeting, like changes, and then be sent back for a second reading?
Well, and that's why I'm.
Oh, that's why I just want to make sure I'm understanding, like, this isn't like pressing or we're going to.
There's, there's stuff to correct that can be done.
Okay. So that, like, discussion could, that revision and discussion could happen.
I mean, we could pull this.
Yeah.
Piece.
But does it have to be, would it come back to a second reading?
There's already, we're already down one member tonight. If one person was to vote no, this is going to get held to us a first reading anyway and is not passable tonight. And it sounds like Vicki's kind of leaning towards no with this in its current worded form. So at that point in time, I'm thinking maybe you guys ought to just send this back to committee and Thursday night, you can get the wording how you want it.
I'll see more on that. I don't necessarily understand what you mean, Vicki. So I'm looking here in documents on demand and I'm not seeing the, um.
1223.
1223. I see 223, but I don't see 1223. I also don't see how it would matter.
122023.
Yeah. I'm here in resolutions. I'm in 2023.
It's ordinance. It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
Yeah. A resolution would be a three digit number.
Right. Okay. So I've got it pulled up and I don't understand that you want the six man taken out. That's what I did. We've all been talking about the six man, taking the six man out, repealing the six man. Do you want the whole thing gone or do you want just the six man language gone?
As our motion stated, it was to repeal ordinance number 12 dash 2023, which means we would totally get away with.
Sections 135.02 and sections 135.
No, no, because ordinance 12 dash 2023 amends and supplements those sections. So if you repeal ordinance 122023, you are getting rid of.
So you want to amend the ordinance to take out what I took out?
Right.
So what's the deal?
Well, we.
Question, are we arguing over semantics because?
It sounds like it.
Okay.
Because it's the same way to do it, but the question is, what does it matter if we amend and supplement and take it out? Which is the cleaner way.
So if somebody looks at this 10 years from now and looks up, 122023 is still in our books, correct?
122023 would not be, it would be in the books, but whatever number this is, is 12 dash.
16.
Or 16 dash 2025. It would be amended as of the date that it gets passed. So it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
So like a repeal, is it necessary?
Right.
Amend again?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is what I thought we were talking about.
But that's not what the motion said. And there was another piece of legislation when somebody said, are we wanting to repeal it? And you said, oh, no, we want to amend it. Not repeal it, we want to amend it.
So we want to amend it.
I just want to make sure that our motion, which was to repeal ordinance 12 dash 2023.
Right. And the way to do that is to amend it, amend the 135.02 and 135.03 and take out what I have stricken out.
So repealing a motion or amending a motion, you're saying are the same thing? Or, or amending an ordinance?
Well, you can't just repeal it because it's already been passed and it's already on the books. You would have to amend it to have it taken out so then it can go and be put in without that in the ordinance.
So Vicki, I looked at the original 12 dash 2023 that Brandon just had up there on his computer. And the way that is, is it's exactly like this, it's in front of us, except it doesn't have the strikeout. So if.
Because when we did, or when, not we, I was here then.
So if you repeal it, you would then be taking it back with strikeouts to the way it was. So you'd essentially be accomplishing exactly what your motion was at the last committee meeting.
And the thing is, it wouldn't be sent off and be amended back to what it was. This allows it to get the language changed. So.
Well, and again, I mean, you know, you're the law director and I, I respect that. It's just, why wasn't then when the motion was made to repeal ordinance 12 dash 2023, was it not stated, no, you don't want to repeal it?
Because I didn't think it mattered. You wanted the six man gone and the six man's gone. You wanted the six-man gone and the six-man's gone.
Okay, you, I mean, you do need to change administrative, change fire department to administrative.
I was going to say, that can be done right now.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that? Or is it just, you just do it?
Well, how are you feeling on this, Vicky? Because if you vote no on it, it's still-
I'm telling you right now, I'm voting no.
Well, then we might as well not amend it, we might as well just hold it to first reading or send it back on Thursday and you guys can redo it, whether you want it.
I have a part of my inquiry. Can the, can the repealing, hereby repealing ordinance number 12-2023 and be added to the beginning of the caption and then it be voted on tonight or not?
It don't matter because it's not, if Vicky votes no, it's held to first reading.
If that's what she's held up on is that, I'm asking if it could still be voted on if that was added.
Yeah, we can do whatever.
Repeal and amend?
Well, she wants, she wants to add hereby repealing ordinance number 12-2023 and if that was added.
Okay, but it still doesn't change the fact that the request wasn't amend and supplement, so we would have to take amend and supplement out for her to be happy about it. I don't-
No, she has it on there, and amending and supplementing.
Yeah, but that wasn't in the request either. Like, that wasn't in the request, just repealing the six-man minimum was in the request because we're not taking out 135.01 and 135.02 entirely. We're pretty much in agreement that that wasn't the issue, we're just taking out the language for the six-man minimum, which is what I did.
I'm just asking, Vicky, that I guess if that was added, would, would that be amicable for you?
Well, I suppose it would be contradicting what I said, that I'm concerned that it doesn't talk about repealing ordinance number 12-2023 because that's what we asked for, but then if I say I'm fine then with and amending and supplementing, we didn't say amending and supplementing, so-
But that was what was in your verbiage.
She's not okay with that.
Yeah, it was.
I think what's going on here is, I could say I ran around the block, or I could also say I went around the block by running, but you're, you're still saying the same thing.
Semantics, yeah.
I have a question.
I do too.
Does it fundamentally change the ordinance that we're trying to change by doing it randomly, Vicky?
It doesn't fundamentally change the law, I'd say. Come on, sorry.
What's left in the ordinance after you've repealed the six-man minimum? What's left in the ordinance? Is there other-
The rest of 135.01 and the rest of 135.02.
So there is other verbiage in the ordinance, it's important that it remains.
Correct, that we're not getting rid of.
But, but it would end up looking exactly like it was prior to the 12-2023.
Right. It's just two different ways to get to the same results, is what I'm understanding, correct?
And plus, if we just repeal the ord, or if we repeal 2020, or 23-2023 or whatever the hell it is, it won't, it's not amending and supplementing it to take it out of the ordinance that's on the publishing right now. So if you want to send it back, and we can deal with it Thursday, and we can add the repeal-
And replace, repeal and replace, is that what you're saying?
No, because, well, no, because Vicky's hung up on that, so we, we aren't repealing it, we're not repealing the whole thing, we're just repealing the, what I have stricken out, but it wasn't requested that you amend and supplement it, that you would just repeal the or, the ordinance, which doesn't allow it to be amended and supplemented, to take that out, but we can go back and we can do it on Thursday and we can add both.
Okay, so let me ask you this, if you repeal ordinance number 12-2023, that would take section 135.02 and 135.03 back to what it was-
No, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, because it would still be published as is, is what he's saying, right?
Correct, and you see at the end of my ordinance where it says that the clerk is, that the clerk of council is directed to publish this legislation and this ordinance, blah, 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 blah. If you just repeal it, then there's no direction to publish it, and it's going to stay on the books, which is why I didn't think it mattered, because-
So you're saying that if we, if we just say hereby repealing this ordinance, that this isn't published?
Can I clarify? It would still be published, it would just not exist.
It would just not exist.
Correct.
Ordinance 12-2023 would not exist.
Correct.
Correct.
And would that change the text in-
It would remove what was bolded.
Okay.
And meaning it goes back to what it originally was-
Correct.
Before 12-2023 was passed.
Correct.
What does it matter, though?
What do you mean, it doesn't matter? That's what we want.
I said, what does it matter?
But if you amend and supplement, amending means changing something that is already established, so we're, we're arguing over semantics, it sounds like.
Just send it back-
So can we just send it back on Thursday?
Excuse me?
I said, just send it back to-
I make a motion to refer ordinance number 16-2025 back to committee.
Second. There is a, Ms. Slater has made a motion to send this ordinance back to committee, it was seconded by- I have a discussion, if you don't mind. Is there any discussion?
As Mr. Garbeck has explained, was it suffice your questions and concerns?
So I guess my question is, is the committee fine with the legislation knowing that that's not what we asked for?
Who's on the committee?
Who's on the committee?
Kevin, Zai, and Chris.
No, that's not me and, me and Vicky and Jimmy. Yeah, Vicky and Jim, that's right.
It's buddy committee, like, there's a board.
Yeah. Which one is it again?
Yeah, are we legally allowed to answer that question? We're not having a health and safety-
We're not having a health and safety committee, maybe.
I still have a motion on the floor, which was to send it back to committee, Ms. Slater made it, Mr. Meade seconded it, and we are discussing it this time. So-
You can answer that now, will you?
No, I don't think so.
At this point, I'm going to proceed to ask for a vote on sending it back to committee on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ordinance 16-2025 is sent back to Health and Safety Committee. I also still need a motion except the other ones as first reading.
So move.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded it on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I have one question because I don't want us to come back to the same thing again on the North End Fire Station. So you're putting a minimum bid of 225 and you're saying we have a guaranteed bidder for that price. My question is this, should we not lower that down to 200,000 and let the bidders go after each other? Because we couldn't get anybody at the first thing, because Tommy Starner came to a bunch of us and said, do we have a check? Are we going to go through that same process, are we going to spend another $700 on advertisement, okay, and then we're not going to have a bidder? Okay, should we lower it down even a little bit more and let them fight it out in the bidding wars? That's a, it's an idea realistic, or are we going to go back to where we were at the first time? You know, where you said, oh, we have all these bidders and then guess what? No one showed up. So are we going to have people at 225 or not? My thing is, I think it needs to be lowered down to 200,000 and let the bidders start at each other and let them come in and bid. Thank you.
My one comment to that is, we did incur costs the last time we passed the legislation and went through the newspaper publishings, and I believe it was about $1,000, Lisa told me. It was like 700 for the newspaper plus the 200 for the legislation.
But was that just for the North End Fire Station or did it include Wendy's?
I think we pay per line.
Well, I think those were done separately.
More public participation.
I have a quick question. Lisa Allsop, 1323 North Sandusky Avenue. While you guys have sent this legislation back to committee, is the fire department still working a crap ton of overtime? I'm looking back there, Tommy.
Yeah, nothing's changed.
Okay, just want to make that.
Any other public participation? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Proposed Resolution 212-2025, it's the Cruisin' with the Cops Street Closures, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Bussaras, Ohio to ban, to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorize emergency personnel for the Cruisin' with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show on Saturday, June 14th, 2025.
The motion accepted as second reading.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Ms. Hickman seconded it on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the second time. Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
President.
Mr. Meade.
I'd like to make a motion to table 12-2025.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Meade to table 12-2025, which is the 2025 manpower ordinance, is there a second? Okay, we, motion fails due to lack of second, we're going to continue on, consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Proposed ordinance 12-2025, it's the 2025 manpower, an ordinance amending ordinance number 20-2024 establishing the compensation in human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of the various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation in human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Bussaras, Ohio, commencing retroactively to January 1st, 2025, and declaring emergency. Proposed ordinance 13-2025, it's Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1187.021 Ponds, establishing section 1187.021 entitled Ponds and chapter 1187 entitled additional, additional zoning district standards under title 11 entitled additional zoning requirements under part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras. Proposed ordinance 14-2025, it's Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1193.01 or solar panels, establishing section 1193.01 entitled solar panels under chapter 1193 entitled solar panels under title 11 entitled additional zoning requirements under part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bussaras. Proposed Resolution 210-2025, it's 316-320 Woodlawn AR to R3, a resolution amending the official zoning district map to officially rezone 316 Woodlawn Avenue to 320 Woodlawn Avenue from Designation Department Residential District or AR to Urban Neighborhood Residential District or R3, and directing the Engineering Department to effectuate this change post haste, and directing the mayor and council president to sign said official zoning map, zoning district map upon said changes being made.
Need a motion accepted as final reading.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Muritz seconded it on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Manpower Act, we need to vote this down, we don't have the money, we are in a budget crunch right now, so I cannot see any of you council people because, voting for this because even Mr. Meade said this would be political suicide, and I have to agree with that. We don't have money, you can't give any more raises out. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Slater.
I have a motion to reconsider Jim's motion to table this. I feel like this is a serious issue that all council members should be-
Side of the motion to reconsider.
Would it just be a motion?
I believe the reconsider-
No?
So-
She can, she can move to reconsider, yeah, because she isn't on the losing side, so. Now?
The motion-
It never made it, it never was voted.
Right, so-
I'd like to make a new motion to-
Correct.
To table this.
Second. Ms. Slater has made a motion to table ordinance 12-2025, it was seconded by Mr. Meade. Roll call vote.
Can we have a discussion?
Is there any discussion?
I just feel that because this is such, so contentious, I feel that all members should be present for this vote to go through, this vote, this motion to be voted on.
At this point in time, I want to pass the gavel to the council pro tem president because I want to have a discussion. I agree with Mrs. Slater, I think that all seven council members should be here, and we have one that was not able to attend tonight. Don't know if that's because they were trying to get out of being on record voting on this, but I think it should be tabled as well, at least until the next meeting at a full, all seven members are here. That's the end of my participating in this discussion.
Need a motion to return the gavel to the president.
Return the gavel back to the-
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Muritz and a second by Mr. Hickman, roll call vote, please.
Quickly, is he allowed to rule over something that he's debated in? I believe that's not appropriate.
Okay. Table that for a moment, or hold on to that for a moment. So there was a motion on the floor to table proposed ordinance 12-2025 by Mrs. Slater and a second by Mr. Meade, roll call vote for that, please.
Myers?
No.
DeShawn?
No.
Slater?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Now's our motion to return the gavel to the-
Same motion to get the gavel back to the president.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Muritz and a second by Rick, and roll call, please.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Hickman?
Yes.
Continuing with discussion on the motion to table, is there any other discussion? At this point in time, we will have the roll call vote.
For?
This is to tabling the 12-2025.
Yeah, we already did that.
The motion is closed. Okay.
At this point in time, did we already vote on a final reading acceptance?
Yes.
Okay, still public participation, is there any more public participation on legislation that's been read for the final time? Seeing none. All of those are referred back to the originating committee except for the 12-2025.
And 16-2025.
Committee report on pending legislation. Finance Committee.
Plating's first, I believe.
Plating Committee.
Proposed legislation ordinance 13-2025 favorable, that's BCO 1187.021 Ponds, and proposed ordinance 14-2025, BCO 1193.01- twenty twenty-five, BCO one one nine three point oh one, solar panels were favorable. And proposed ordinance two ten dash twenty twenty-five, three sixteen, and three twenty Woodlawn, AR to an R three were favorable.
Finance Committee.
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, amending ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-three. And finance is favorable to proposed Resolution two thirteen dash twenty twenty-five, which is the O. Sandusky Avenue Street paving.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
You see it, Health and Safety?
Health and Safety Committee.
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed Resolution two twelve dash twenty twenty-five, Cruisin' with the Cops Street Closures.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
Uh, Public Lands and Buildings is favorable to a proposed Resolution two fourteen twenty twenty-five, Sailed in Oracle and Fire Station.
Okay. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Point of clarification, what ordinance number were we discussing?
Seventeen dash twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
And Sherrick is absent.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
And Sherrick is absent.
Ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution two thirteen dash twenty twenty-five, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
Yes.
Emergency?
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
And Sherrick is absent.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution two thirteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
No.
Slater?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
And Sherrick is absent.
Resolution two thirteen dash twenty twenty-five is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution two fourteen dash twenty twenty-five, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules with reading of the caption and text and declare an emergency?
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Muritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution two fourteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second again.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Mr. Muritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Resolution two fourteen dash twenty twenty-five is duly adopted. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Me made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Me?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Point of clarification, I'm so sorry. I could not hear over the coughing. What ordinance are we on?
Two, uh, ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
And Sherrick is absent.
Ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five is duly adopted. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Me made a motion, Mr. Hickman seconded.
Me?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
And Sherrick is absent.
Ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five is duly adopted. Do I hear a motion to adopt Resolution two ten dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Slater made the motion, Mr. Me seconded.
Slater?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Hickman?
Yes.
Resolution two ten dash twenty twenty-five is duly adopted. Ever not finished business. Does anybody have any, or not finished business? New and miscellaneous business. Does anybody have any new and miscellaneous business? Mrs. DeShawn?
Committee appointments for our, well, I guess before I want to, before I say that, we went through this whole meeting and, uh... We didn't say welcome to our new council.
Threw it right in the fire.
Pardon?
Said we threw it right in the fire.
Yes, we did. So I would personally like to say welcome to Mrs. Slater, to council.
Thank you.
Now having said that, I would like to ask about committee appointments for Mrs. Slater.
Well, I talked to Brandon about this, and the committees that the, that the fill-ins happened after Mrs. Shireman quit, they would have to convene and they would have to remove them committee, wha...
That's not what I said.
What'd you say?
I said that anyone who filled in for Mrs. Shireman could resign. There would be real no, really no basis to remove them. But based on the ordinance, they have those until, they have those seats until the expired term. So the only way to get them, to get a spot available is the seats that they filled in for Mrs. Shireman until a council member was appointed, they would then have to resign. But it looks like Economic Development still has a spot open.
No, it didn't.
Aaron fills that seat. He doesn't have an in blackboard.
Gotcha. So...
But Aaron's not here to resign tonight.
Correct. But everybody else could, and Aaron could theoretically resign tomorrow via letter, or on Thursday, or whenever. Another way around it would be to increase the size of the committees on a temporary basis until the end of the year.
But that's set by ordinance.
Correct. I'm just saying it's an option.
I don't think we can overrule an ordinance without passing an ordinance.
That would be the option.
Or it's a suspending.
But you don't have an ordinance in front of us ready to go to pass.
Correct. But we could do that next meeting.
So you can't suspend the rules and...
You can't suspend an ordinance.
Right.
You can suspend rules, but you can't suspend...
Wasn't, isn't it though?
But I would say, with as much crap as people gave a council member for being on council and not being a part of a committee, I don't think it would be very fair to say that you're on council, but you're not allowed to be on any committees.
Could the council president simply present a new slate of his suggestions that would put Mrs. Slater on all the positions that those that were said filled in from when Mrs. Shireman resigned, and have council just pass that again as a whole for the remainder of this term?
Yes.
Can I just request, Kurt, that you do that at our next meeting?
Yeah.
That will, I think that's the cleanest.
Okay, so... We are doing what again?
I asked him to...
Sorry.
So the way that the council president makes the suggestion to all of council to vote on assigning committees.
Okay.
Those of us, like, I, I can speak for myself. I filled in, I think, on two of them that Mrs. Shireman had previously served.
Correct.
Removing those of us who temporarily, as it will be, filled in, in the holes that were created by Mrs. Shireman's resignation from said committees.
Okay.
Putting then Mrs. Slater in those positions. So it would essentially, if you look at how we were at the beginning of our term, strike out the name Shireman, put the name Slater in.
And why is that something that could not be done?
Right now.
Tonight?
Because we would have to resign from those positions to do it that way, and Aaron's not here to do it that way. And rather than do it twice, my suggestion was just to have him...
Well, we could do it tonight, and she could be ready to go on Thursday.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean...
I guess, yeah, I was thinking he'd have to prepare us. He could just verbally...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just you and me, right? But even though we...
Me.
Oh, I mean, how do you put five on a committee?
No, no, I think, no, I think what you need to do as council president is make the presentation to us as council members to vote on, to return it to what it previously was before Chris and Aaron and myself got put into those openings, essentially removing Chris, Aaron, and myself from those fill-ins of Mrs. Shireman's previous spots and putting Mrs. Slater in any of those spots.
And you want me to put this on page?
No, I thought you had to in my head, but no, you don't. You can just verbally say ditto, and we can vote.
So as long as it's you saying you're off the committees?
I'm not on the committees.
No, he's not. And, oh, so Sharon, so Aaron needs to be here.
No, I don't think she does. I think the way that we were asking is, is the council president is making a new recommendation. We are voting on it, you know, she's just not here to vote.
But yet she's still on it until she gets off of it.
Correct.
No, and if you make the suggestion and we vote it out, the change is effective immediately for all of us.
But didn't we run into that problem when we had these ad hocks, and they wanted to take Carolyn off, and they said, you can't, you can't, you can't do it that way?
Oh, you're gonna amending, yeah, you can't do that. It would be a violation of due process. So that's what you said.
That's what I'm trying to...
You can't amend it. We ran into that problem. Carolyn, it's a violation of due process. Just amend it or remove her. But there's no other option than you giving up your spots that you filled in for Carolyn and giving them to Clarissa tonight, so she's ready to go on Thursday, and then next time around...
I feel like...
Aaron can get rid of it and then put her on that committee.
We could do every committee tonight except the Economic Development one, because Aaron's not here to resign.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm waiting on resignations right now for Mr. Myers.
And Mr. Myers.
Mr. Myers and Mr. Hickman.
Public Lands and Buildings.
I'm, from Plating, Mr. Myers, from Public Lands and Buildings, Mr. Myers, and from Service Committee, Mr. Hickman.
There we go.
No.
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 Yeah, because wasn't, wasn't Carolyn on?
No, she's never on service.
She was...
Public Lands and Buildings, Economic Development, and...
Yeah, four people.
The three on the bottom row.
Okay, so I just need, um, I guess you just need to state on record, Mr. Myers, that you're resigning from Plating and Public Lands and Buildings.
Randy, you can take my name off of Plating, Public Lands, if you'd like to.
Okay, so you're resigning?
Yeah.
Okay. And then at this point, I would like to present Mrs. Slater as a candidate for the fourth position on the Plating Committee and the fourth position on the Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Any more?
So moved.
Mr. Hickman made the motion, Mrs. DeShawn seconded, all favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
I'm staying.
Okay, Mrs. Slater is now on Plating and Public Lands and Buildings, but we're gonna have to wait till Aaron does something with the Economic Development.
Can, can I make a motion, um, putting Mrs. Slater on Economic Development effective immediately with the resignation of Mrs. Shire, Ms. Sherrick? Is that legal?
Pending the resignation of...
That way she could do it by email tomorrow?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And then she can serve all three committees Thursday?
That's a good idea. That's completely legal.
I've made that motion.
Mr. Myers has made the motion to put Mrs. Slater on Economic Development pending the resignation of?
Miss.
Ms. Sherrick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hickman has seconded that, all favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
I'm staying.
Okay, so you'll be on that as soon as she resigns. Do we have any other business?
I have some new business, but before I proceed, the gavel should be passed to the pro temp of council for terms of censure of council president.
Give me a second.
Is there a second to Mr. Hickman's motion?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hickman.
So the terms of this censure will deal with online comments that were made during the final live publication of the City of Bussaras's council meeting. At our last meeting that had comments, was the last meeting that had comments. Uh, Mr. French went over in various, um, um, words of what Kurt had said. The exact words were, "You are the biggest worthless piece of excrement that ever walked into Bussaras City Hall. Uh, go back to Galleon and stay there, and I suggest you take the fork out of your mouth because you need to drop some pounds there, buddy." And I'm still right. The only difference between me and everyone else you talk to at City Hall is no one else has the balls to tell you to get lost when you were wasting everyone's time last year with your circus act. Then I have a second comment directed to Zachary Roski. Uh, "Sorry to hear you are engaged to that waste of space talking about on Adrian Kemery. Take my advice and quit being a simp and leave her feminist ass now before you get hitched. She stalked me on October fifteenth after the council meeting and took photos of my property. What type of grown person would do something like that at forty years old? Take my advice, leave her now before you make the biggest mistake of your life. She's gonna screw up the city's treasury even more than it already is with the million dollar water deficit. Tell her to lay off the burritos, bro." For being an advocate, one of few advocates, and I do respect the administration for their decision with the live comments, being one of the advocates for getting rid of these comments, it looks very hypocritical for you to then turn around and make the same harassing comments that you claim that were happening to everybody else. So those are my grounds for censure.
So is your motion requesting a censure based on the information you just presented?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Well, I get, I get to, I get to rebut this.
When is the discussion?
You'll have your moments. Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
All right, now it's time for discussion.
Before Kurt states, if, if this is something you're willing to do or wanting to do, I request that the two incidences are split, so I don't have a conflict of interest.
I can do it that way, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's go back. Mr. Hickman, you would amend your motion. Please make your first motion.
My first motion of censure would be to censure Council President Kurt Bankhauser to the comments made to Keith French.
All right, and do I hear a second to that?
I second that.
All right, now we'll have discussion on that matter.
For clarification purposes, can you clarify who seconded that motion? There was two.
I'm sorry. Motion was made by Mr. Hickman, and the second was by Mrs. Slater.
Thank you.
It's discussion time.
So first of all, the Mr. French comment was not made during the live of the meeting. It was added to the comments of the video after the meeting was over.
Yes.
So it did not happen during the meeting, like you stated.
But you still made the comment. I never specified it was made during the live. It was a comment that you made that you then removed.
I never removed that comment. Somebody else deleted my comment, and that right I never removed that comment, somebody else deleted my comment, and that right there is a violation of my constitutional rights for freedom of speech, so I'd really like to get to the bottom of who deleted my comment, because it wasn't, it wasn't vulgar.
All right, let's stick, let's stick to the topic at hand here.
I did not cuss in it, and you forgot the little clown emoji and the world emoji, the clown world.
Still further?
What's wrong with that?
Yes, I have further discussion, I know that the law director has stated that any comments that Kurt makes on his own time, whether they be questionable in being supportive of Ussires's objectives of making the city better, it, they are private, however, I feel to further insulate it, it would be important for us to state that we do not endorse them.
Yes. We do not endorse the comments that were made during your private comment session.
So you're regulating free speech in, in this city?
No, so what they're doing is they're saying that the city, that despite the fact that you're council president, we specifically don't stand by what you said, even though it was in your private capacity, I think that's the point of the censure.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
So what you said, what you said, we have to separate from the city.
Yeah, what you said, we got to separate from the city, and one of the ways to do that is through censure. It's our way of saying, you said it, it's all on you, you didn't say it as council president, right? You didn't say it as council president.
No, I said it under my personal account.
And we're saying that we're not endorsing it.
So all we're saying is we're not endorsing, on the record.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Meritz?
Yes.
Sherrick is absent. Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hickman, you have a second motion to make now, I understand?
The?
Let's be present, I do that, please, my turn.
I have no problem with that, does anybody else have any objection? Drive safe.
My second motion will be to censor Council President Kurt Finkhauser on the comments made to Zachary Roski.
Okay, do you want me to have a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, was this on the city's video or was this on a news website?
The comment made to Mr. Keith, I do believe, is on the last meeting that we had.
What, to Mr. Who?
Mr. Keith.
His question is about this one, the one with Mr. Roski at this moment?
Mr. Roski had addressed the council president on behalf of Mr. French, and then Mr. Finkhauser responded the way he did.
Any further questions, Mr. Finkhauser?
Yeah, so what's so wrong with this thing here, because I don't, there's no vulgarity in it, there's no cursing in it.
Name-calling, you used the word feminist ass.
I, I do believe she is a feminist, I do believe that.
I think again, from what Mr. French.
So where's, so just the word ass is what your problem is?
No.
We're just distancing the city from any potential liability.
Lay off the burritos, was that?
Yes, that was a comment.
Okay, and that's considered a personal remark, and that is, we're not allowed to do that according to our council rules, which I know are when a someone's?
But this wasn't during a meeting, it was after a meeting, so you guys are just gonna nitpick every little thing that I say.
Point of order has been called, Mr. Finkhauser, what is your point of order, Mrs. Slater?
Can we please stay on task of the, the censure?
I will rule on that, yes, we will stay on point, so.
I got one final thing to say on this, just real short. Donald Trump called Rosie O'Donnell fat, all right, and if I said something about a burrito, if that's the worst I ever did, you guys are making a huge mountain out of a molehill here.
All right, any further discussion?
Still, whatever you say represents the city, and we have to separate ourselves from that.
We should clarify that, whatever he says in his personal capacity does influence the public perception of the city, what he says in his private capacity does not represent the city, however, it is important that we distance ourselves from those comments to remove the city from any liability.
That's what I meant.
But that's.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor and a second, roll call vote, please.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Abstain.
Meritz is now absent, Sherrick is absent, Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries.
Is there another one?
No.
Okay, because I had some more printed off here.
Do you want there to be more?
Well, this half-ton club thing, okay, I want to clarify that. I thought.
Point of order.
Point of order has been called, what is your point, Mrs. Slater?
I don't believe that this is relevant to any of the business that is going on with the city.
I will agree with your point of order.
Well, it was discussed up here earlier, about two or three different people.
I will know the point of order, is there a motion to return the gavel to the president?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Hickman and a second by Mrs. Slater, roll call vote, please.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Meritz is absent, Sherrick is absent, Hickman?
Yes.
Uh, me. Me.
Yes.
Did you forget?
I believe they have another piece of new business behind me.
Okay. Okay, new, moving on to new business, I was really thinking about this, and they did this down at the State House, the state legislature created a DOGE committee, I think we need one here in Ussires.
Point of order.
What's your point?
You are supposed to preside over the meeting, not tell us what you think or what you're favorite of, that is going to sway the decisions of the council.
I'm all the rule on this point of order.
I would like to appeal the decision of the chair. You would need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, there has been a motion to appeal the decision of the chair by Mrs. Slater, it was seconded by Mr. Hickman, we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.